Hey. How they are? Cal's in the waiting room. Just want to let you know before I let him in.
Sounds good. I was just pulling up information from the Plan Commission packet.
My cat is yelling. Let me take care of my cats. Okay, no more yelling. All right, I'm gonna bring Cal in. You okay?
Yep, good. I'm just gonna just looking through my documents, see what I've got here.
Sean is here as well.
Well, yeah, bring Sean in. And good, okay, I've got a document that has the phasing for Storehog. Okay.
You are muted by the host.
You are not muted, Cal, but Sean's turned his mute off.
Is my video off?
Your videos are both off.
I have my video on.
There you go.
Do I need to have mine on?
No, Sean, if you don't want to, you don't have to. Great. So just to refresher, the objective of today is to follow up on questions with regards to the Hunter's Crossing proposal. That was a private proposal to change density. And I'll be going through that today with multiple letters that were produced indicating where they're at for water sewer and trip information. Also, you left the written comment period open for an individual notice we did for the airport overlay zone or APZ. And I'm gonna ask tonight that you reopen verbal specifically for that, in case there's anybody on the call. And we forwarded basically only three comments, four comments we received on that, but we're gonna go through that proposal real quick. And we have a summary sheet in your packet of comments that came in since your very first workshop, and we're just gonna go through those one by one and see if you want to make recommendations. So the goal tonight is for the Plan Commission to make a recommendation to the council on the draft, and each motion is going to be about a change, a change based on a request or a comment submitted into the record.
So Heather, just a quick question. When I go to public hearing, continued public hearing on draft of the plan, I have to be very specific that it's only to Hunter Crossing and APZ?
Yes, and that you're gonna take and review the written testimony that came in about Hunter's Crossing, review the written testimony about APZ, and then open it up for any verbal testimony on the APZ because that notice went out after your last meeting. And the goal is to make a recommendation to the city council, so we have a document where we can go through each of those requests. So over the past three months, you've had just a handful of some narrative text changes, some questions about the analysis that's in the plan, and we can go through that today, but one of the other things was to make sure that you read off your hearing instructions, so everyone knows that when they get onto the conference, they know they're on mute automatically.
Okay.
Okay, that
You know, in the, in the comments, he says that any comments made by proponents, opponents, or other members of the public shall be made from the podium. We don't have one, right?
Your podium actually is the Zoom conference, so Zach's gonna be controlling video and telephone, so just to make a distinction, in your agenda, there's like a general comment that's open only to anything that's not on the comp plan. So if that's somebody who wants to come in and say, hey, I think it'd be a great idea if you guys did a downtown plan, you could take that comment. That's all that public comment period is for.
Okay.
It's later when you get to the public hearing to hand it over to me. I'll kind of summarize where you are and what we're doing tonight, and then I'll hand it back to you to take indirect for any public comment that we get by phone or by Zoom. And that's when we talked about, you may want to establish, I think it's a three-minute, is that right, Zach, time limit on speaking?
I believe
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I mean, if the the comment on the plan has been limited to just the APZ change and the Hunter's Crossing, because that was the Plan Commission's direction, so I can help, but the comment should be about those issues. Somebody shouldn't be saying, oh, by the way, you know, I have a real problem with the academic development chapter. I mean, that, that opportunity has come and gone.
So we're only concerned with two items, so the Hunter Crossing and APZ?
Yes, and then the last one was a third issue, which was the Department of Transportation had some technical questions about trips in the plan, and we have the information to show the answer to that, and I can provide that guidance.
Okay.
Our, Art and Mark are coming in.
Yeah, and we'll have to start in another minute. So Cal or Sean, did you have any questions about the procedure tonight?
No.
No, just, I noticed several of the things reference some maps areas, and I don't, I can't find any copies of the map on hand.
Oh, on the Air Force one, yes.
Um, Zach's gonna have some maps, and I have them too, about the APZ and the J-List boundaries.
Yes, the one I don't have, I was actually reading it just before we got in, that the Jeff Johnson letter that just came out, he mentions there's an attached map talking about the flight patterns. There, I don't have that map, so.
The reason we don't have it is because it's a 16-megabyte document.
Okay.
And so I talked to him by phone, and he asked me just to describe what it is, and you've seen it actually when you first came to the office, Zach. It's a it's a simple line drawing showing the flight patterns over airway heights, and so it was, it was too big to come through the city server, which is generally about a 10-megabyte cap.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. All right, I'm gonna share screen, which is just gonna be the agenda, and then if you guys are comfortable, I will let everyone into the room.
Okay, and we did not hear from Eva.
So we won't know how many people are going to comment till we start the meeting, right?
Oh, yes, Zach's just about to start it, and on your controls, you can actually go downward with the arrow, and you can see anybody else who's gonna join the call, and right now
Oh, I see.
It's only, it's only Plan Commission members. Nobody else has joined us.
Okay.
So we have seven people in the waiting room, so when I admit them, they'll all be in there.
Oh, I need a timer.
You guys can see, you guys can see the agenda, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the screen
Are we supposed to be able to see everybody else on the screen or not necessarily?
If they don't have their video turned on, then we wouldn't see them, but whatever they've identified themselves would be on the screen, and a telephone number will appear if they're coming to us by telephone.
But we would only see one person at a time?
No, you're, you should be able to see and arrange your screen to see everybody, including any phone calls at one time. So there's a couple of options on the Zoom to show a grid, and that will allow you to see up to
Oh.
12 or 16.
I got four.
Yeah, just use the scroll button, and you can look, look
Well, I'm, I'm on an iPad. I'm not sure how to scroll on that. That's all right. It's not that important. I can hear. That's what's important.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna let everybody in.
Okay.
Is it six o'clock?
Yes.
All right. I would like, you opened up. I would like to call to order area heights planning commissions meeting for for May the 13th at 6:00 PM. We'll do a roll call. Commissioner Patel present. Commissioner Sant Fell.
Here, present.
Commissioner Evan Dixon. Commissioner Dixon.
She is here. She's coming in.
Okay.
I just unmuted her. There you go.
Commissioner Art Bud.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mark Collins.
Present.
All present, right?
Yes, all commissioners are present.
Okay. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. Legends, I pledge
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, this one was tough, huh? Everybody's speaking at the same time. I'd like to move the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Cal, I apologize. Who seconded that?
Sean.
Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also have to move a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I moved to, I moved to approve the minutes from the meeting from last month.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're all in favor. We have anybody for public comments?
Just gonna unmute everyone one at a time, and they can say yes or no. So we'll start with, let's, we'll start with Greg.
There goes. Hello. Welcome, or thank you for inviting us.
You have any public comment?
I do not.
Okay, next.
Jerry, Storehog.
Yeah, hi, thanks for having this open to me. I have no public comments.
Okay, next person.
Ryan Stewart.
No comments. No comments. Next person.
Kevin Freebaugh.
You have any public comments?
No, sir, thanks for having me.
Okay, is that everybody?
Uh, no, we have four more. Charlene.
You have any public comments?
I'm, thank you for having us. No public comment.
Okay, next.
I believe this is Seb Jones.
Hey, how are you? Do you have any public comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next.
Ken Johnson.
Ken Johnson, do you have any public comments?
No public comments at this time, thank you.
Okay, next.
I have Jean, but it looks like she or he has not connected to the audio yet. So Jean, if you can hear us and you have a public comment, please just message me, and we'll make sure that it gets done. Okay, you're good to go.
All right, we have no public comments tonight, so we're gonna move to presentation. We don't have any presentation today, staff, do we?
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move next to the public hearing, and I'm gonna open up I'm gonna open up the public hearing at six or five, and I would like to read the rules. All comments made by proponents, opponents, or other members of the public shall be made from the podium. In this case, it will be the Zoom software. Any individuals making comments shall first give their name and address. This is required because an official recording of the public hearing is being made. If a person is physically challenged and requires special accommodation, please inform the chair. No comments will be made from any other location except the Zoom software. At this time, any person making out-of-order comments shall be subject to removal from the meeting. There shall be no demonstration, applause, or any audience participating during or at the conclusion of any person's presentation. The rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public hearing, giving every person an opportunity to hear, and ensure no individual is annoyed or embarrassed by exercising their rights. And also, I'm going to limit a three minutes limit on any verbal comments, and tonight's public hearing is gonna be a continuation of the draft comprehensive plan for the city of Airway Heights. We are going to address the Hunter Crossing and APZ and a Department of Transportation concern. I would like to hand it over to staff to start a summary and explain open issues.
Oh, thank you very much. Chair for the Plan Commission, in summary, since the last meeting of the Plan Commission, which was a public hearing on the draft comprehensive plan, the Plan Commission had requested, as you summarized very, very well, that we were to provide some additional information with regards to a proposal by the property owners for development in the northwest portion of Airway Heights called Hunter's Crossing. There have been several letters from Storehog Engineering, as well as Washington State Department of Transportation, and Bill White from TU Engineering, which has been included in the record for your review. We also have included a letter from Century West, which is a consultant for the city of Airway Heights with regards to Hunter's Crossing on water and sewer capacity as well. In the second area, the city council took action on April 6th to consider an additional land use amendment as part of the draft comprehensive plan. This was briefed at the last hearing for the Plan Commission. This would include properties currently low-density residential category within the APZ2 and Seon Contour area of 70 to 75. Since the last hearing of the Plan Commission, we did do individual notice to property owners and individual notice to those residents that we were able to leave a notice at. The exception would be for any properties where no trespassing was posted on the property, and so we were not allowed to approach. I should note that within the mobile home parks in this area, they rely on PO boxes for receiving their mail, which is why we did handle every of the notices, because there was not a database of boxes through postal service or through a second-party vendor. So we would encourage tonight the Plan Commission to allow for any verbal testimony of, from those who want to speak specifically to the APZ2 proposal to go from low-density residential to industrial tonight, and Zach has a map that we can show you as we go through that material. We also included an errata sheet, so it's just a document summarizing comments. We only received four written comments on that proposal, which we'll go over tonight. And we also had questions from the Department of Transportation during the dialogue of the last hearing about the transportation chapter and the background circulation plan that was produced for that, and we have included a technical memo that will summarize today and what we'd recommend. So with that, let's start with the APZ materials, since Zach has this up. This is the area which we did individual notice as well as property owner notice to make sure that they were aware of the hearing. The proposal is to change from currently low-density residential to an industrial designation. Some of the background is that this area has been identified as an accident potential area and within areas impacted by sound from the flight operations of Fairchild Air Force Base since 1995, culminating in the most recent action in 2012 with an overlay zone adopted in this area. The letter indicated that people were able to participate in the hearing today, submitting letters as well as participating with the Plan Commission meeting. Just some real quick information we put on the website based on comments we received. First is that properties located in this area are grandfathered. That means that there's no requirement, if this proposal moves forward to city council, that anyone would need to leave the mobile home that they live in, or that the home park owners would be required to sell. The impact of changing the land use from residential to industrial would allow, at the property owner's discretion, the ability to do additional commercial or industrial uses in this area. The, the reason for an industrial category is because of that basic conflict between the Fairchild Air Force Base compatibility with residential density. This is relatively high density, because these are leased lots, and as you can see in the image, there are quite a few units in these areas, and the goal is to overall reduce impacts to Fairchild, but also increase public safety. And in the long term, potentially see a conversion of this area to non-residential uses. So no one will be required to move existing buildings and parks are grandfathered. They're not required to leave or to change the use. It would be at the property owner's discretion. We also provided additional information in the frequently asked questions that if there are individuals who are interested in moving to other locations in Airway Heights, there are two projects that are coming forward that would provide both rental and homeowner opportunities for low-income individuals, and that contact information for Habitat Humanity and community frameworks were provided with their permission onto our website. And also that there is a standing offer through funding acquired through the state legislature to Spokane County that if there are parks that are within the APZ that are interested in selling, that Spokane County does have funding available to acquire those properties, but it's a willing seller basis for that information. So it was just further clear this is a long-term plan to look at compatibility between Airway Heights and Fairchild Air Force Base. So with that, were there any questions from the Plan Commission about the proposal to go from low-density residential to industrial in this area?
You said it was light industrial, right?
We have a single land use category of industrial within the comp plan. It's implemented through zoning categories. One is light industrial and the other is heavy industrial. This property is actually touching both light industrial and heavy industrial from different sides, so it could go to either category once zoning was applied to this, which is the second step that would go through Plan Commission and the city council if the Plan Commission wanted to forward this as a recommendation, and the city council were to pass it as an inclusion in this comprehensive plan for changing the land use designation.
I have no questions.
I don't either.
No, I'm, I'm fine as well.
I'm good.
If you would give me patience, I'll go through all three of the topic updates and then hand it back over to the chair to open up for, again, the verbal testimony that you indicated. So next, let's go through the Hunter's Crossing proposal. This was a proposal that came in on the first Plan Commission hearing. If you could go down, Zach, to the map showing the areas. There we go. Our current comprehensive plan, as well as the draft you have officially, shows the area in question as low-density residential, as well as a small area that would be professional services. It's currently Zone C1. The property owner has proposed to change the land use category in four areas to include medium-density residential in area two and four and high Pardon?
Nothing. I hit the wrong button. Sorry.
No, I can slow down or go back. No, no worries.
No, no, you're fine.
And then high-density residential in areas one and three on the map. There were questions that the Plan Commission had about this proposal, including the city's ability to potentially serve an increase of density in this area, and so since the last hearing, we have several letters into the record. One was Century West. Kevin Anderson, the Public Works Director, is here to give a summary of that analysis. Kevin?
Hey, all right, there I am. Yeah, so as Heather said, we had Century West take a look at the Storehog did some preliminary work looking at the water and sewer to serve this higher density, and essentially, the, the short answer is, from a water standpoint, there's really no significant issues. There was a slightly higher fire flow demand with the higher densities that we can accommodate with our existing system. So that's that wasn't really an issue with, or there will be some things as this development occurs, as it, as it begins to build out over time, that will need to be addressed by the developer. One would be the capacity of a lift station that serves the area. Another would be, and then there are two others that are hydraulic downstream gravity sewers that that would be requirements to the developer to fix those hydraulic deficiencies. One of those is a deficiency that, that we've been aware of, and that we know that in the near future, we're going to have to deal with, and it's basically putting in a a flow diversion manhole in a particular location of our system, the areas just northwest of the intersection of Hayford and Highway 2. It's basically where everything along the north side along the north side of the highway down and gets, and gets transmitted through a single pipe across the highway. So we're aware of that, that's, and it's not a very expensive improvement, but regardless, it's, it's in our it's in our capital facility plan, and then what I would suggest is these other elements get added to our capital facility plan in the near future. So the next time we do a comp plan update, I think that would be perfectly acceptable, and then we would just be monitoring the flows and the capacities of, of those particular elements over time. Any questions on that?
I did have one. There was a note from the Fire Department regarding the potential use of sprinklers in the regarding the potential use of sprinklers in the houses. Does that impact the volume of water needed?
Typically, a sprinklered system would reduce the fire flow requirement. Yes.
But it would not affect the water volume to the development necessarily.
Well, if you're talking about water volume, normal domestic use.
Yeah.
It wouldn't have anything to do with that. It would, but it would, it would reduce the requirement to provide say instead of without, instead of 2,000 gallons a minute, you may only need 1,500 gallons a minute.
Got it. Okay.
In the event of a fire. And so, so that was simulated in our water system hydraulic model to verify that the densities that are being proposed can be handled by our water system.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
You bet.
There there were additional requests with regards to transportation impacts and certainly I can summarize those for you as well as Kevin. And of course Storehog provided several letters in response to the transportation impact. But the summary was that if area three was changed from commercial to high density residential and areas one, two, and four were increased in density that there actually would be less trips generated by the overall project because of the amount of trips that could potentially be generated should area three remain as commercial. So it means that there was a not an increase. And our transportation consultant, Bill White with TO Engineering has reviewed that analysis. And we provided a letter late today indicating that there is a certain amount of trips that that project could generate. And after that, that we would have to do some additional analysis. And I recall that it's about six hundred and fifty-five trips would be allowed. So a portion of this development would be able to move forward before an additional review would be required to assess impacts for that. We do, I believe, have Storehog Engineering is Jerry Storehog is also on this video conference. If he had more detailed questions about the transportation impacts, but that was the net result was if all four proposals went before council, the way they've been presented, that they would not increase the chip generation and therefore overall transportation circulation assessment and our transportation chapter has accounted for those trips up to a certain point. Doesn't look like there's any questions from the Plan Commission. So I'll just move on that. We did also receive comments on the Hunter's Crossing. If you recall, due to some technical difficulties with the Zoom conference at the last hearing, Fairchild Air Force Base was not able to provide their comments. And they were allowed an additional opportunity to submit comments and they did so today specific to the Hunter's Crossing proposal. Those were forwarded on to the Plan Commission. And they're also were forwarded on to the applicant represented by Storehog Engineering. If Zach, if you could pull up the, well, we'll leave this map here. Their letter basically went by area.
They had us who our volume is decreasing.
Okay, it might be my internet connection. We've had.
You're okay for me.
The letter from Jeff Johnson from Fairchild Air Force Base goes by area and indicates what they would support for increased density for this proposal. Specifically, they have cited a twenty eighteen action by Airway Heights in conjunction with Fairchild as well as Spokane County, the City of Airway Heights and the Spokane Airport with regards to a land use appeal that changed the land use designation over area three from commercial to, from a mixed use area that would allow for multifamily and a conditional use to a, a commercial designation that does not allow multifamily. So Fairchild in that letter did support some of the proposed density changes, most specifically the medium density residential, but did not support the proposed designation of area three from commercial to high density residential. And that was due to flight patterns that are occurring over this area. And that was the map that we were unable to receive because of the size of the, the map that was submitted. It was a line drawing based on frequency of flights and showing the pattern. That pattern shows that there are flights from Fairchild that do occur over the center of Airway Heights and that there are noise impacts as well as potential accident issues with those flights. I should note that that flight pattern by Fairchild is different than the contour areas that we've adopted and that we regulate for purposes of higher potential crash area and sound impacts, which we'll get to in just a moment, but that was the map that they proposed and, and that is their recommendation on the Hunter's Crossing. So Storehog Engineering provided several letters to the record responding not only to Fairchild Air Force Base, but also as Kevin indicated to the water sewer and of course the transportation impacts. I needed to also mention that they also responded to the Parks Department and the Fire Department comments. Parks Department was recommending the area four be single family to low density residential. The zoning in that area four is currently actually manufactured home. It falls into the low density residential category, but the zoning is manufactured home. The Parks Department's recommending single family in that area and that the Fire Department, as I believe Art Bub had mentioned, was concerned about service to this area, response time for fire personnel and recommended that a development include requirements for fire sprinklers. And there is a response from Storehog Engineering to that request for mandatory fire sprinklers. I should note that in single family dwellings and dwelling units less than four acres, I believe this is correct. Sprinkler systems are not required. Sprinkler systems are required in what the international code identifies for apartment buildings, which are five units or greater. So this would be asking by the Fire Department to establish a standard for fire suppression higher than the international code requires.
Yes, but the fire letter referenced the issues they're having with training and retraining of staff, meaning they have a diminished capacity for people. And it was suggested that having the sprinklers might alleviate the need for further more staff. And I think that's a good observation. If we're running out of firemen, anything we can do to suppress fire would be a good thing. And the letter from the developer was yes, but that would increase costs. And yeah, you're right. It would, but it would save lives. So just my thoughts.
So then finally, of course, the Department of Transportation had requested an analysis or including those trips as part of the City of Airway Heights analysis of the overall impacts to Highway two and their infrastructure. And that was part of the TO Engineering or, our traffic engineering consultants responses that these trip generations provide for a net difference based on the commercial having higher potential transportation impact. And if that was converted to residential, there'd actually be less trips. And so I believe there's a six hundred and fifty-five trip count there that has been included in our technical memo. So with that, that would conclude the letters and responses we received around the Hunter's Crossing and hopefully address the Plan Commission's specific questions about the proposal and our ability to serve in the responses by the applicant to those questions of service.
I have another question with regards to Mr. Johnson's comments about area three. Specifically in his letter, he says that if we change this, it goes against a mutual agreement between Airway Heights and Fairchild in two thousand seventeen. Is that a matter of record?
What is a matter of record is the appeal, which was specifically about twenty-nine acres in the southeast portion of Airway Heights that came in as the annexation from the county to Airway Heights called Deer Creek. That property was in a area identified as mixed use allowing for multifamily. It was appealed and went through several levels of, of appeal and ultimately found that the growth hearings board who had indicated that having mixed use on that twenty-nine acres was not compatible, not compatible with GMA and, and base mission support and compatibility requirements. In twenty eighteen, when the city moved forward to remove that twenty-nine acres from the mixed use category, additional properties were discussed and included in the change of the ordinance. And so area three was one of those as well as a piece of property along Hayford Road, though they were not part of the appeal. And the response to the growth hearings board was here's our, here's our final map showing that we've removed that twenty-nine acres from the mixed use. So it's the Fairchild Air Force's position in their paper that that change of this property to remove the mixed use was a encumbrance perhaps on future consideration of multifamily at this property.
Hmm, because his last sentence in that statement says changing this zoning would negate the agreement we worked hard to achieve. So I'm confused. If the agreement is still there, which is correct?
I'm not aware that there is a separate agreement, Commissioner Bub. What we do have is an ordinance where we remove the mixed use designation from that property. So to familiarize the Plan Commission and those who may be listening, the mixed use zone was an ability through a conditional use permit to add multifamily as part of a combined multifamily office or retail development. And so the action of that ordinance was to remove this property from that mixed use ordinance. The basis of yield was not this property. And the documents that I reviewed this by our attorney, Stan Schwartz, did not contain another separate agreement about property.
Okay. Is Mr. Johnson on the call?
No, he's not, but he offered to be available. I could call and bring him in.
No, I'm, I'm just a little confused still, but if you saying it was removed, then it's removed. You know? That's fine. Really? It's fine.
There's been quite a bit of a history research on this piece of property ever since the owners of the property came forward indicated that they wanted to move forward with development to research property and then also what would be allowed. Any additional questions from the Plan Commission about the follow-up as requested on Hunter's Crossing?
So all the issues that we had have pretty much been addressed at this point.
That would, that would be something that the Plan Commission, when you get to deliberations, you could discuss if you were satisfied
Okay.
with the info. At this point, I just wanted to see if there were additional questions or if there's something that we may have missed that we need to bring forward for you before you get to deliberation.
I have no question. Anybody else?
Not until we get to deliberations and I have some.
Okay, let's move on.
Let's see. So the last piece of the update and summary that was requested was a response to the Department of Transportation's clarifications and questions on our transportation chapter, which was based on a study called a circulation plan. We met with the Washington State Department of Transportation as well as SRTC that had, which is the Spokane Regional Transportation Council, which had similar questions and we proposed to create a technical memorandum that would be provided to address their questions. And we're proposing that that technical memorandum be included in the Plan Commission's recommendation as an appendix to the comprehensive plan as well as the circulation plan that was the basis or the study behind the transportation chapter. And it key in those questions, and you've, you may have seen this in the emails that we forwarded from Greg Fig from Department of Transportation and sheet is, was information about the Kalispel development included in the background trip generation and the answer very some in summary, because the memorandum, several pages long was yes, there was inclusion of, of development phases of Kalispel. Was there multifamily that was included in that analysis? Yes, some multifamily was included in that background analysis. Would the projects that were identified as part of that circulation plan such as improvements on Hayford Road, Craig Road? Were they adequately addressing the demand? Bill White with TO Engineering compared his analysis to the analysis in the comp plan, including things like population projections as well as land uses, for example, commercial and industrial and did a comparison of total trips generated. And they were very similar. That was the summary of the analysis that was produced and that the projects that were identified were appropriate for the amount of trip generation from the comprehensive plan, such as Hayford Road improvements. And also identified that we would be specifically updating that background circulation element within the next twelve to eighteen months, because our goal was this first plan was to update and consolidate policies and update many of the various background plans, such as the circulation plan, the water plan, the sewer plan. And that immediately after this, we would embark on a new vision of a comprehensive plan and do a complete update of a comprehensive plan after this. So there's more work and additional clarification we can provide in that next update. But the plan we have before you and the analysis, it was Bill White's opinion that we, these projects he's identified adequately addressed demand and that there would not be any changes to things called level of service. So level of service, if you remember, things like the amount of delay people have to wait as we move forward. So Zach, if you can pull up Bill White's letter or I can pull it up either way. I can pull up the letter here. I think you might have to give me permissions.
Sorry, I gotta give it just a second here.
Oh, you've got it?
Yeah.
So while Zach's looking for the, the memorandum from Bill White, were there any questions about transportation from the Plan Commission? I think Art Bub had several different questions about capacity in the city system for transportation. Were there additional questions or Commissioner Bub, did this address some of those questions for you?
Yes, it did.
Okay. The underlying sections of this letter, just as a note, are emphasizing answers to specific questions from the Washington The underlying sections of this letter, just as a note, are emphasizing answers to specific questions from the Washington State Department of Transportation. So with that, if there aren't any further questions about the transportation analysis, I want to bring up one item with regards to the landies map and then we can hand it back over to the chair for verbal testimony. Can you pull up the map showing the APZ boundary, Zach?
Yeah, do you want the, which one do you want?
I want the one from our current draft first.
Okay.
So this is the future landies map that's in our current draft, the one that's online and was issued for review by departments and agencies and available for public review. And in particular, can you zoom in over the Highway Two APZ? During a meeting with the Fairchild Air Force Base last week, we were talking about some properties and was one of those really funny conversations about, but it's in the APZ. Well, no, it's not. It's in the APZ. Well, no, it's not. We were looking at different maps and in this particular case, the APZ two, which is the green hashed area, and then Highway Two, it's immediately north of that. We noticed that the APZ was too far south from where we see it in, for example, our zoning map, which is available online. And we began to look at, and this is mostly the great work that Zach Becker has done, looked at the various layers and we got the information from Fairchild Air Force Base. They're very gracious to share their 1995 sound contour data and APZ data that we rely upon for these maps and determined that for some reason that this APZ depicted on here was actually about 500 feet too far south and too far west from where it should appropriately be placed on the map. Can you show the corrected map?
Okay.
So as you can see, the APZ area actually just about touches Highway Two and as a correlation, 15th Avenue was south of that is where the other map boundary. So we just want to bring this to your attention. Our intent is to circulate this updated corrected map and see if there are any additional comments or concerns about it. We did confirm that the remainder of the information, like the sound contours, the impact the other landies categories does correlate to the Fairchild Air Force Base data into our data that we use, for example, for the 2018 zoning map, which is officially out there. So we just wanted to bring this to your attention and that we're going to provide anyway, an additional opportunity for agencies to review or comment on this change to the map boundary.
Okay.
So that was the only note and then I'll hand this back over to the chair for any additional testimony and then once the Plan Commission is completed with that and closes the verbal and written testimony and moves into deliberation, I will be happy to assist with guiding through all of the individual comments, which the Plan Commission has received directly as well as a summary and a staff recommendation for those for Plan Commission for deliberation if they want to move to that this evening.
Thank you, Heather. I would like now to move to open up public verbal comments. I want to remind everybody that we are going to limit to three minutes. And also, if anybody gets abusive or we have a problem, I am going to instruct Zach to mute you out. So please, please, please. Let's do this properly and in an orderly manner and make sure that everybody understands each other. So I would like to start opening up whoever we have in the line, please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, I'm gonna just go through and unmute everybody one by one again. So starting with Greg.
Oh, hello, Greg Fig, Washington State Department of Transportation, North 2714 Mayfair, Spokane, Washington, 99207. I believe Heather did a good summary of what has transpired since our April original meeting on this. The only thing I would add is in the transportation memorandum, circulation memorandum that Bill White of TO Engineers prepared is it is recommending kind of some sideboards on the the industrial property swap to the south and that was that the property be limited to about 26 acres or I think it's 340,000 square feet of building area. Anything more than that would be more than what the the residential units would equate to as like a swap, as a one for one swap out of traffic. So that was contained in the memorandum about a limitation and then similar on the Hunter's Crossing, I think Heather alluded to that, that that be there'd be some sideboards on what their maximum allowable development would would be. Other than that, I did not have any comments, but certainly could answer questions.
Anybody have questions for him?
No.
If not, thank you very much and we'll move to the next person.
Jerry Storehog.
I'm available for any questions that may come up, but I don't have any specific presentation or narrative to provide to the commission tonight.
Thank you very much. Next person.
Ryan Stewart.
Thank you, Ryan Stewart with Spokane Regional Transportation Council, 421 West Riverside Avenue, Spokane, 99201. All I have is just to say thank you very much. We really appreciate city staff and consultants working with us to answer the questions that we had and providing the commitment to do the update that Heather mentioned over the next year, year and a half or so, and we look forward to collaborating on that and looking at regional transportation issues. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next person.
Shirley.
Hi, Shirley K., Washington State Department of Transportation, 2714 Worth Mayfair. I defer to Greg Fig's comments.
Did she say she had any comments? I missed out on that, sorry.
She was deferring to Greg.
Okay, thank you very much, Shirley. Next person.
Ken.
So I'm Ken Johnson with Spokane County Fire District. And I'm the fire chief there. And I don't have any comments or questions. Thank you for offering this opportunity to listen to what you guys are working on. And thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, Ken, for joining us. We appreciate your support too. Next person.
All right, this is the last person and it is Will Sinclair.
Hello, I'm Will Sinclair from Storehog Engineering. I'm just here to listen, available for any questions on the documents we submitted along with Jerry.
Thank you. Any, we have anybody from the public? Pretends testimony, general public? I guess not, right? If there is no more testimony, I would like to
Tell, I got one more gene.
Okay, sorry. I apologize.
You're okay.
Yeah, this is Jeff Marsh. I own property at 12527 West 19th. And I'm basically listening and it's just curious in the process and appreciate the opportunity. Don't have anything to say at this time.
Thank you very much. We have anybody else?
You're, you're good to go.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing at 6:49 PM. And I would, if there's, like to open up discussions with the commissioners on the subject.
I did have a question or two if nobody else does. And maybe I'm a little slow to the party, but in reviewing the maps tonight, again, before the meeting, I read that there were a proposal of 197 apartments. And the term apartment caught my eye in that I didn't remember hearing the term apartments before reviewing the maps. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I missed it. But I'm curious if the rest of you saw that or if you can explain to me. Are they regular apartments? What? The reason I'm asking, I'll just put my hands out on the table. I remember a conversation that the Planning Commission had maybe a year ago and that there was an informal agreement, I thought, between City Council and Planning in that we were not going to build any more apartment complexes. So in the Hunter Crossing development, how do 197 apartments fit in with that philosophy?
Is there anywhere we can bring up that map so everybody can see?
Yeah, I noticed it lists apartments in there as well on one of those things that were submitted, but I thought they were talking about doing maybe attached homes, duplexes, triplexes, that kind of stuff.
No, no, it breaks out apartments separately. It's got, you know, multi-use, it's got duplexes, it's got the small village homes, single residential, and then specifically 197 apartments in an apartment complex. Am I reading it right? Is there someone from Storehog that can answer that?
Yes, Jerry Storehog and Will Sinclair are both on the Zoom conference. Jerry, did you want to address Commissioner Bub's question about Area Three, I believe, in the multifamily high density proposal? Zach, can you unmute Jerry?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, sorry, there's a little lag on that.
Okay, yeah, I'm Jerry Storehog here and Will, you might might supplement me here as needed, but for the, I'm not exactly sure where you're reading it. I'm thinking it's probably in one of the traffic letters probably. But what, one of the tasks that we were asked when we addressed the traffic impacts is that we looked at the zoning in its highest use when we're evaluating traffic impacts. So not necessarily what, what the underlying developers or property owners are proposing, but what is allowed, I guess, in the zoning. What, what was presented in the March 11th presentation is what is being proposed by the Airway Heights LLC. But in order to get to what they're proposing, which I think in that Area Three was they're looking at maybe some, like a retirement type community, which would be apartments to a certain degree. But you know, it's, but from the purposes of the traffic studies, I think the the task that was put in front of us is to present traffic impacts, which would be looking at the highest use that could happen within that particular land use. Will, do you have, are you there, Will? Is that, am I saying that correctly? Is what you understand the traffic studies reported?
Yes, that we calculated maximum density, but the master plan is intended for, to add some diversity to the housing in the area and bring in a senior community.
Okay, but in my mind, there's a huge difference between a senior community such as, I use touch mark as an example, just because I'm familiar with that, where they have three levels of apartments as well as assisted living and et cetera, et cetera. As opposed to apartment complexes such as we have out in the Basalt area. So before I move forward on this, I want to be guaranteed what we're going to actually agree that we're allowing.
Can I just provide some clarification, Commissioner Bub?
Sure.
So Storehog Engineering did respond to their request from both the city of Airway Heights and from Department of Transportation to identify what's called highest use because in a process like this, you're not actually reviewing a specific master plan. What is helpful and informative for the project proponent to identify what their goal is, the actual decision and consideration of the Plan Commission and the City Council and for purposes of transportation impacts, we're looking at what the potential highest use could be so we understand the impacts of it. So their analysis was appropriate and including apartment development in their projection so we could understand the water sewer and transportation impacts. And the reason for that, as I mentioned, is this process is not project specific. If the Plan Commission recommends moving, for example, in Area Three from commercial to high density residential, it would enable and allow the full range of uses under the implementing zone. Now, what we've discussed and what was recommended by our traffic engineer, for example, TO Engineering, is the potential that if this proposal change to higher density moves forward, that it also be accompanied by a recommendation to, to put a developer agreement before a land use change was approved by council. And that is a private contract that's allowed under Washington state law between a local jurisdiction and a developer. It goes with the land. It isn't specific to the property owner that puts parameters on the potential allowed uses and density and development that can occur on that property. That, that would be an add-on. In this case, the Plan Commission wanted to forward a recommendation to increase the density per this plan to also recommend a developer agreement. Otherwise, if the Plan Commission moves this proposal forward, it would have to be seen as the highest and best use because the, the property may be developed or purchased by another person in the future and they're allowed under the growth management and the adoption of the plan and through eventual zoning to do anything that that landies category and zone allows.
Okay, so in the Hunter's Crossing development, they're not listing an apartment complex. Is that right?
They're proposing in their March 11th presentation and the documentation of doing some sort of senior housing. But what the Plan Commission has before them is not a project specific proposal. It's whether or not to allow high density residential.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thanks. Sorry to be so pedantic, but I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was talking about.
Oh, these are great questions and this, this comes up often in these types of deliberations between a specific proponent's intent for the land, but, but these designations live on years, even generationally beyond us. So, you know, that's something for the Plan Commission to consider moving forward.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, Heather.
Thank, thank you for that question also. This is Jerry. Thank, thank you for that question. Also, this is Jerry Strogg speaking and, and Heather for the clarification. The, the intent certainly is not to build apartment complexes there.
Thank you, Jerry. Got it. Perfect.
This is Will from Storehog. I, I just wanted to add that in that same traffic study that was mentioned earlier, where we called out the maximum units per acre at 20 units per acre. There is a breakdown of the, of the projected traffic based on the actual master plan as opposed to the maximum zoning, too.
Got it.
And I should, the documents you want us to pull up, we're, we're available to bring up any of the correspondence that's been forwarded to the plan commission or circulated amongst the parties present today.
Anybody else want to say anything?
I had, my only concerns are more on, along with the Fairchild letter. And going to, I just want to, I see some discrepancies. I mean, one was area three Fairchild's talking about some agreement that I'm not aware of, and it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of documentation out there on, on their aspect of it. But that concerns me on area three. And the other one, Fairchild also comments, or actually pull quotes from one of the articles talking about how our proposal, or Hunter's Crossing proposal, I mean, has it says that the areas outside of the mapped areas and Fairchild says that's not, and I look at our maps and it is. So I don't know if we have map discrepancies between that or is Fairchild looking at something different? Because I know their flight plans don't match the noise contours that we have on the map. So as far as legality and what affects Fairchild, is it the contours that we have on our map now? Or is it what Fairchild is looking at in referencing their decisions?
I have the map actually that I can show. It's which I can share real quick. Can you pull, stop sharing that map, Zach, and I'll pull up the map and question?
You should have permission now.
It's going to take a couple of seconds. I think my internet's really slow here.
Here it comes.
So this is specifically the map that was a part of that ordinance changed by city council that was a result of the hearings board challenge. And this is what the map originally looked at. So to answer Commissioner Fell's question, our sound contours are, are adopted by ordinance and they are what we had seen from Fairchild Air Force Base. So the sound contours match. So they're exactly the same. In this pre-2018 map, you can see this area right here in the northwest portion of Airway Heights was identified as potentially being allowed to have this multifamily allowed by conditional use permit. The actual appeal was this property down in the southeast portion of Airway Heights that was also mixed use. And you can see that tribal property was identified as mixed use as well as the corridor here along Highway Two. So this property was designated and the change in the map was this. So these areas that were in the Hunter's Crossing were removed as was the property that was down here in the southeast part from the mixed use provisions. So there, these were the only changes that occurred as well as the Callisville property changed from being straight multifamily to now being part of that mixed use by conditional use permit process. And this is just a copy of the, it's loading right now. This is in our, our map for the comprehensive plan as well. Here, I've got a couple of other documents. Let me stop sharing and I'll just check. So any questions about? Here we go.
Yeah, leave it, leave it there, right? I have a question unless somebody else is up.
Well, I, I still am a little confused, I guess.
Yeah.
Because the, the area which is on the, the other map is area three. So if we approve that, is it going to cause any legal issues with whatever happened prior with these other changes? And secondly, unless I'm reading these maps wrong, this whole area is outside the noise contours. So I don't understand why that's an issue, but Fairchild says it is within their flight patterns or something.
So I can clarify that, Commissioner Fell, what you see here, the sound contour 65 to 70 and 75, that's what we've adopted as as an output of the joint land use study. This is what we actually adopted. This is what we officially regulate for in order to ensure base compatibility. These contours were based on planes that were flying in 1995 and their flight patterns. We have this agreement about how we regulate land use with Fairchild Air Force Base. So we do not regulate. In addition, above and beyond that, we don't have the ability to further regulate land uses above and beyond what we've adopted in that overlay zone. So I would, I would submit to the plan commission that, yes, Fairchild does fly in different areas over Airway Heights, but our agreement and our official way of regulating land use for compatibility is what you see on the maps here and the maps that we have in the plan moving forward. And so we feel that we are consistent with the J-List agreement and the regulations. I've asked and been looking back into why, even though this property is outside of the sound contours, why it was de-designated for mixed use and multifamily and you know, there isn't a lot of background. Just what you're looking at is literally the attachment to the growth hearings board saying, we're going to be changing and removing properties that were located in the southeast portion. So it would be in my thought, the plan commission, if you wanted to move forward with recommending the Hunter's Crossing proposal in total, the city council that we could do, either research with our attorney Stan Schwartz about the implications of proposing higher density residential specifically on this piece of property. I don't believe that the letter from Fairchild Air Force Base is disputing that the city could designate or consider higher density residential in other areas that are part of the Hunter's Crossing proposal.
Heather, I have a question for Heather.
Yes, Jerry?
This is Will. I, I'm wondering, and that's the first time I've seen that new map with an additional contour. I'm wondering how that affects land use planning in that area, if at all.
That, that map doesn't have an additional, are you talking about the 65 volt? Let me pop up.
I thought there was one that showed a 50 something.
No.
And it was further in. Okay, I missed that.
I've lost the map somehow.
I, I pulled it down. I, I so I have a better before and after for you. I'm just gonna pull it up real quick. So that you can see the difference in the 2018 action. So this is that same appendix A, which was part of the commercial zones allowing the multifamily. So as you can see, here's the 29 acres that was originally part of the appeal. Here's the current C1 in the Hunter's Crossing. Here's the property that the Callisbells are looking to rezone, and these are more reference points. And then this was this was the, what the map looked like after the changes occurred. So after that ordinance was passed in 2018, it removed this piece of property and it removed this property from mixed use. And it changed the Callisville from multifamily to also being mixed use.
Okay, I, I thought for some reason I saw a map with an additional contour, but no, it's not the case. I, I, I would like to also mention that Fair, Fairchild quoted us in our memo, in our second memo. And, and the quote there referred to the mapping in the exhibit that we provided showing our, basically that map with Hunter's Crossing highlighted. I just want to make sure that people reference the, the image.
No, I agree. He, he, yeah, he mentioned it would go over that area and the new school as well. And it's not on the map that Heather just showed us. You're absolutely correct. Heather, can you pop the map back up? Because I have an additional question if Sean is done with his.
Yeah, certainly. I'll, I'll pop the map back up.
I think, I think, Sean, done? I just, I just think the, what's going on, I think, is Fairchild's looking at their current flight patterns and not necessarily looking at what just where the noise contours are, because we have the
Well, exactly.
contours, but their flight patterns are changed.
Yes, and they don't reflect on this map at all. For instance, they fly right over the off-road vehicle park and the racetrack and over Sixth Avenue in their approach, going right over Sunset Park and Sunset Elementary. That's not reflected on this map either. So we are not seeing up to date mapping. I think that's
Well, we're seeing, we're seeing, we're seeing what's been adopted by Airway Heights in, 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 what was it, 95 or whenever, when they did this. But yeah, Fairchild's
Right.
They got
If I could, Sean, in, in our, we're obligated to do what we've, what we have adopted by ordinance to regulate for. We don't have the ability to regulate above and beyond this. So this map was, you know, adopted in 95, an overlay zone was adopted in 2012. It was reexamined and updated just in 2018, which is the map that you see right now. Appendix B is exactly what's in the code today for where mixed use is allowed. Just to give you a little bit of background, we're meet, we're meeting the requirements that we've agreed to with Fairchild Air Force Base. So requesting further development restrictions based on flight practice is, is above and beyond our ability as a regulatory agency to do.
Right. And I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that. I was just suggesting if this is the map that Fairchild is saying their flight path follows, it's totally incorrect.
It's not, and that's an acknowledgement as part of, of a compromise. And this compromise is, is if we were to have a restriction for all areas that Fairchild flew over, then we wouldn't be able to have residential land uses in Airway Heights in the northwest corridor of, of the city. This was a compromise to allow for development to occur to serve not only other community members, but service men and women of Fairchild Air Force and a portion of our city. And so this was what we've adopted and continued to maintain and support for purposes of, of zoning and allowed land use.
Right. And, and I understand the difference between what we can control and what land use regulations are as opposed to what the actual real contour map would show if it were plotted right. It has nothing to do with what we regulate or not. That's not my point. Point is the map doesn't follow where the airplanes go.
I, I think, I think what would be important is we can use this map as what we are talking about, but I think you guys want to see an updated map that the Air Force is, is, is comparing to, I guess.
No, that's, I'm just, I'm just making comment on Fairfield's comments. I want to stay
Me, me too. No, I agree.
Commenting on things that we can't do anything about. We have the map. Their contours were established, and that's all we can go by.
Right. And you're right. I was just commenting.
So Heather, after last month's talking to Mr. Johnson and seeing his notes that came over, I'm just led to believe that the Air Force feels this is going to have a huge negative impact if we change that use and allow the, the higher density use on that. But I'm conflicted because it seems to me like the Air Force is also manipulating what's being said in order to, to back their belief. So is the Airway Height map any issues legally if we were to change that with Fairchild or the Air Force?
It, just to clarification, question mark, asking if there is legal implications if the plan commission recommends going to high density residential on that, that location in Hunter's Crossing?
Yes.
My response is, is I think you could make the recommendation, but I would, or should be caveated with a further review of the letter from Fairchild and getting a recommendation from our attorney Stan Schwartz. I have forwarded on the letter from Fairchild, and I have had a conversation with our attorney Stan Schwartz in anticipation of receiving that letter. And that's what we discussed was if the plan commission wanted to move forward with this as a recommendation to change it, that we would have a more in-depth review of the implications. I think that that, just to answer, I think, Commissioner Bubbs and Fell's original questions, there is no separate agreement that we're aware of or commitment by Airway Heights to limit density, residential density in this area. What we do have on record is an action to de-designate a portion of this property that would allow multifamily as part of a past action. So we could look into it further and provide further guidance to the city council on this issue if you wanted to move it forward.
Anybody have any comments on what we were discussing right now?
No, I'm good.
I think Heather, what I would suggest that if everybody wants to move forward, we, we can move forward, but we need to put a couple of stipulations, example for what you just said, but I think the language of that, I think I'm looking for your advice on that.
Okay. We can certainly do that if we move into a deliberation phase, but it sounds at this point, what direction would the plan commission like to proceed? Do you want to continue just asking questions about the plan overall, or did you want to move into deliberation phase? Do you want us to bring up the errata sheet, go through these topics?
I guess we could ask each person what they feel like and then move forward. Commissioner Fell, do you have any suggestions or comments?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm ready for you to move forward.
Commissioner Butt?
No, I'm ready to go forward.
Commissioner Mark?
I'm ready to go forward.
And Commissioner Dixon?
I'm ready to go forward.
So I think based on everybody's comment, we're, we're ready to move forward. But we do want to put some stipulation as far as the, the maps conflict and the legality is concerned, correct? the maps conflict and the legality is concerned, correct?
Yes.
Everybody agrees to that. I think we should, you should just give me a proper sentence how to move forward.
Okay, I can certainly do that. May I, may I ask a question? And while, while that's occurring, Zach, can you pull up the Hunter's Crossing proposal with areas one through four on it? And I will stop sharing that. Okay. So my question is, did you want to make a single motion on all four areas, or do you want to take them into?
I mean, from my perspective, if this is going to come back to us for review later on, then I think we should, we're not worried about what's going to happen, but if we don't see it again, then there is a concern.
Well, that, go ahead, sorry.
I said if we take it as a whole thing and move forward, we will see this back next time in the Planning Commission when they propose a particular project there, correct?
Yes, if this proposal were to be approved by City Council under our our administrative requirements, for example, preliminary platts and planning developments are brought forward for consideration by the Plan Commission. If it was a proposal that was solely multifamily, then that, that would not come forward to Plan Commission for further review.
How does everybody feel about it? Should we do it as a whole thing, or do you want to do it piece by piece?
Well, I gotta say, I'm still hung up on the apartment I issued. If, if, if we just say, yes, this can go forward, and we never see it again as a development, I don't have a guarantee there won't be an apartment house sitting there.
So I think I understand maybe where the Plan Commission's going, so let me just list out some options for the Plan Commission to consider. One is that the Plan Commission would recommend moving forward with the Storehog proposal for areas one through four. That as a element of that, that the Plan Commission would recommend a legal review of the issue brought up by Fairchild Air Force Base about multifamily in Area Three, and that that analysis be provided to City Council as part of the Plan Commission recommendation. And that for this proposal that the Plan Commission is recommending a developer agreement be entered into with the city prior to City Council's decision if they were to approve the proposal. And that developer agreement would include limitations on type of housing and density.
Sure, but let me, let me clarify. I'm only one vote, guys. If everybody else feels it's okay the way it is, feel free to put it forward. I don't want to screw this up at all. So I'm just one person.
My view is to do the whole thing as one package. I, I don't know what Mark feels like. I guess, I guess we're going to move forward. One package.
With the stipulations as Heather outlined?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think it will only be fair, even though you have a concern, I think concern is a concern, so whatever, her stipulation was good, so we can move forward with that.
That's fine.
If anybody else has anything additional to add to that, we're open to that discussion right now.
What we would need is for a Plan Commission member to make a motion to get a second from another Plan Commission member to have discussion on the motion and to vote on the motion.
Somebody want to propose that language? Or should I write it down? Heather, if you don't mind, can we repeat that language one more time, please?
Yeah.
So the motion would be to move the Hunter's Crossing proposal to City Council with the following conditions. One is that there be a legal review of the area going from professional office to high-density residential. And that review is about the Fairchild Air Force Base comments. And that that go forward to the City Council for their consideration. The second condition would be that they're also accompanying this proposal, a recommendation for a developer agreement to limit types of units and density prior to final approval by City Council. And was there, was there a third issue?
Could you make that, Heather? So going forward, if another developer ever comes in and buys the land and takes it over, that they have the same agreement that the original developer had, or is that not allowed?
That is an inherent part of a developer agreement process, is it runs with the land. It is not specific to the property owner. But I will make a note of that as well as to ensure that it runs with the land. So that was the legal review and the developer agreement. Was there a third item?
I don't think so.
No.
No.
So anybody have any other comments before we move forward? So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the Hunter Crossing to the City Council with the following stipulation. Number one, legal review of the area professional, was it professional office to high density? And also to review the Air Force comment in reference to that. And number two, also would like to recommend that we have a developers agreement to limit the type of units and density prior to final approval by City Council.
A point of clarification is that as the chair, you'll need to have somebody make that motion for you, Cal. Second it, but you've read it very well.
Who wants to take that?
I'll make a motion to move Hunter Crossing's proposal to City Council for them to take into consideration, stipulating that we have a a legal review in reference to Fairchild Air Force Base and that we have a developers agreement in place for the multifamily use or apartment-style buildings on the high-density land.
Anybody want to second that?
I'd like to second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the record, everybody is agreed.
Yes.
Okay, because I can't see the hands.
Oh.
All right.
All right, so with your issue, would you like to address next, or would you prefer to pull out the errata document? Zach, can you drop the Hunter's Crossing off?
Yeah, okay. So in this item, did we go through this last time, or this is the first time?
This is the first time you've seen a summary sheet. Last public hearing, it was in the form of a spreadsheet.
Oh, I see, okay.
And just real quickly, the document is intended to help the Plan Commission through the comments that were received. It includes the page number and the comp plan where the individual or entity was identifying a question or comment. And there's a staff recommendation following it about how to address the comment. Many of these are requesting small changes in the text or narrative.
Right.
So we can go through these one by one.
No, no. How many you have? Quite a bit, right?
I think there's eight pages of them and
If it's just typos and just small things that doesn't affect a major change, then I think we're okay with that.
No, there's no typos, but for example, in the Kalispell Tribe, they wanted to have us appropriately identify the name of the tribe and their facilities. They wanted to make sure that we, in our maps, were correctly depicting the amount of property that's trust land versus private ownership. They wanted us to include some, some language about the economic impact of the Kalispell Tribe to the Airway Heights area. All of these were recommendations where we've said, yes, we'll be happy to update the map for depicting trust land. Yes, we'd be happy names of the facilities. Yes, we'd be happy to include descriptions of built projects and the, the impact of the business of Kalispell Tribe, provided that they give us some information about, about what that retail impact is, because as a tribal entity, we don't have access to the data about how much sales or how many people may potentially shop at the Kalispell gift shop and then, and then eventually, you know, go to an Airway Heights business for their business.
I'm okay with that, if everybody's okay with that.
Yep.
All right, we can move forward.
Can you stream down through the last, the Kalispell? I just want to make sure I haven't missed anything. Here, map updated, yes. Can you keep going? Employment data, we've said we don't include employment data in our economic development chapter, but if they want to give us economic information, including businesses, we can include that. Keep going. The only comment, the last one about mentioning the gravity sewer main, the response was, we didn't mention any other gravity sewer mains anywhere else in the plan and in any other location, and so it didn't seem necessary to mention a single gravity sewer station on the Kalispell Tribe location. So that summarizes the Kalispell's comments and recommendations. How would you like to proceed with the Kalispell comments?
Are you, I mean, do we have to run a motion for that, or basically?
You can run a motion, a motion for each section of comments, or you can say, I think everything's good here, and then you can wrap up everything in a single motion after we review all the pages of the letter. It's up to you, whatever would be easiest.
I think we, I'm okay if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the whole thing.
I would move to approve the whole thing with the corrections as noted.
As a point of clarification, are you only speaking to the Kalispell comments or the entire errata document?
I think it should be the entire document, right? It's a similar correction.
Well, then I would just, just let me point out a few updates to that before you
I think anything of concern, I think we should review.
So we have a motion to accept the entire errata that was by Art. Was there a second?
Art seconded.
I think, Cal, you have to have another, another person second.
Okay, sorry.
And so, under discussion, staff has been asked to identify any changes or corrections, and we'll just go through the document. And I promise to do it in about three minutes. How about that?
That's fine. The clock starts.
So just real quickly, STA just wants us to identify some route and map changes. We can do that. The fire department, they wanted us to update a narrative about their service. We can do that. There's a difference between the estimated amount for a fire station and equipment versus what we have in the plan. We can update that. The police department wanted an updated narrative. We can do that. They were talking about a potential replacement of equipment or a building, but it wasn't defined. It's not in the plan. We could do that in a future update. We've addressed all of the SRTC and Wash dot comments, and we're proposing that we adopt that technical memo in the appendix on the circulation plan that it was based on as an appendix in the plan. We've already gone through the Storehog's comments on this. On the J-List, we've already addressed that many of the comments we received were concerned about displacement. The proposal to change the land use is not a displacement, but we would need to have a separate motion after this about changing the land use over that property. So we'll, I'll just ask that that be a separate motion. And then we received comments about Fairchild Air Force Base, about the plan, and we identified all the ways that we did ensure base compatibility. They have followed up and asked for a narrative to be included in the plan, and we're absolutely fine with having that narrative included in the plan that was forwarded to you today as well. It simply talks about base compatibility is a growth management requirement. We have a J-List agreement, so we're good with the narrative. And that summarizes the comments that we received in the errata sheet. So I'd say your motion, I would recommend, include everything except for the land use map change over the APZ and do that as a separate motion.
Sure, we can amend the motion.
Any other questions?
No. Who wants to propose the motion?
Well, we have a motion from Art, seconded by Eva, to do the whole errata sheet. Art proposed an amendment to remove the APZ as a separate motion. Does Eva agree with that?
Yes, we need two separate motions now.
You can do the separate motion on the APZ change after this first one, but Eva, do you agree with Art to do the APZ change separately?
I do agree with Art.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm lost here. Who wants to propose the motion to approve this?
We already have a motion on the table.
Okay, we do.
It's been seconded by Eva.
I'm sorry, I'm delayed. All in favor? I, for the record, everybody voted. So we have to do the second motion now for the land use change for the APZ.
So if that would help, Zach, can you pull up the land use map and the draft plan, the future land use map?
So on this, are we approving that change you made when you moved APZ two? Is that what we're looking at?
No, that's just going to be a correction, kind of like a misspell. We're going to identify it and move it forward. But if you'd like to vote on the corrected APZ and move it forward. But if you'd like to vote on the corrected APZ boundary, we could do that. This is about the yellow. Uh, can you do the circle? It's the low density residential in that area that we did notice on to change it to industrial. Um, so that, that's the area in yellow that we're proposing to go to industrial as a change to the map and move forward to the city council for consideration as industrial.
Just have one question. That map you put up at the beginning of the meeting showed these, did it include those four little spots across the street there?
No, it, no, it did not. Those four lots, if Zach can go back to the land use map. It did not include those four lots. Those four lots actually have some apartment buildings on them. So when we did the individual property notice, we did, uh, the area on the last map. I'm sorry, Zach, can you bump back to the last map real quick? So it included all those properties in purple that are the main part of, of the low density residential area. And you can just see barely on this map on the far left-hand side next to Lawson Street. You can just see a couple of those apartment buildings.
Okay, so we need a motion for what? For approving the zoning change?
We would need a motion to, uh, change the designation for um, all of those properties with the exception of the four lots with the apartment buildings on it from low density residential, industrial. And then what, uh, we can do is we can identify that there are some apartment buildings on those. And if you'd like to make a motion recommending that we include that, those four parcels, we can do an additional individual notification and have them, uh, be available to comment to the city council on the change.
Wouldn't it be necessary to change them since the whole area is going to be like industrial?
Yes, this, uh, if you wanted those four parcels to be industrial, you'd need to include that in the motion for recommending that they be industrial.
What does everybody think? Because the whole area is going to be industrial. And you just don't want to have one parcel with apartments there, right?
I don't, I don't mind moving forward with what we have now. We'll have to address those at some time. I'm just curious as to why they weren't included.
We were working specifically around the area that had the mobile homes on him as part of, uh, the compatibility requirements under GMA. And so all the area we notified were areas that had mobile homes, mobile home parks belonged to the mobile home parks in the notification. And it looks like Greg has a question about whether or not this would be still limited per the circulation memo. So the proposal is to change to industrial. And there's an assumption of the amount of area that would eventually transition to industrial. And that would, uh, if it were to go more than the 50% or 26 acres would require additional transportation impact. So what Greg's asking about is in that transportation that we saw from Bill, we identified there's a cap on how much of this area could become industrial before we'd re-study the transportation impacts. And that's, that's part of this proposal as well.
Then I guess we should just approve the current land change.
I have just a real quick question. So that, um, that parcel of land in the northwest corner that has an apartment on it, it looks like the APZ bisects it. Will there be any conflict whatsoever with half of that parcel not being in the APZ? And then wanting to keep it as a, uh, identity use or no?
Uh, so if Zach can use the key, you're talking about this L-shaped property or the apartment buildings?
Well, right there, if I'm remembering correctly, that is an apartment building on that parcel, right? Yeah, right there, that northwest. So you see like the, the APZ is going through the middle of that.
Yes, the, if you, if the Plan Commission wanted to expand their recommendation and include all of that parcel, um, it would become industrial under this recommendation. That parcel is very, very small. Um, and so the underlying designation of residential wouldn't probably be enough to develop as a residential property if, if it was vacant. And I say that with hesitation because, um, this area is actually, I believe if we pulled up, SCOT already has apartment buildings on them.
I believe it does.
So the, the idea is even though the APZ is only on 50% of that one parcel, existing use on there, and it would make the most sense to extend the land use designation over the entire parcel.
Just out of curiosity, was the owner of that parcel contacted?
Um, they were not. As I mentioned, the properties that were on the other side of, of, I believe that's Lawson on the east side were all contacted, but not these four lots because the original action by the city council was to, uh, include the manufactured home and mobile home properties. Um, a few moments ago, I suggested that the Plan Commission move forward with the main part of that low density, um, as industrial. And that we could have a recommendation that you wanted to include those four parcels, but we should do additional notice for parcels. So they'd have an opportunity to discuss, uh, or to provide comment to the city council about those four. So, um, trying to suggest that you don't make a recommendation to actually change it. You make a recommendation to proceed to contact them and let them know that that would be a proposed expansion area and that they could provide their own feedback about whether to be included. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes. Heather, just for, for information, hypothetically, that four apartments stay there and the whole area becomes industrial. How would that affect that particular property in the future?
Um, it would impact it the same way any of the other properties that load into the residential, which would be that vacant property would be developed with commercial or industrial uses next to them or across the street. This is, look at those four parcels, all the remainder of that block. And on the other side, Pogue already is owned commercial. So today, someone would be able to put a commercial use by right into the remainder of the lots in that block next door to the development. And that would be the type of pattern that could continue in any of that area with the designation of, of industrial as a variety of commercials allowed in an industrial zone and industrial uses.
I think we should recommend with a notice to change that from residential to commercial. I don't know how everybody feels about that, but because going forward, they have to do this whole process all over again. Probably won't make sense.
Yeah.
Well, I have a problem going forward with what's already proposed and then and then doing a separate, a separate one to address these four properties, is that?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
That's fine.
So we're having two separate motions now, one for land use change and then the second one for the four parcels there, right? If you can guide us on the language, Heather.
Sure, okay. Uh, so the first motion would be to, uh, change the properties in the current low density residential category from 16th Avenue to 21st and from Russell to Lawson to industrial.
I'll make a motion to change the land use from Lawson to Russell from low density to commercial.
Commercial or, or industrial?
Industrial.
Sorry, sorry.
Who wants to second the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So the second motion would be to take the four parcels bound by 18th Pogue in Lawson that are low density residential and initiate a notification process, uh, to change the designation to industrial uh, so that they have an opportunity to provide comment to the city council on such a designation change.
Mark, you want to propose that? You're good at the language.
I will make a motion to send out notification and start the process on land use change from Pogue to Lawson to 18th Street.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think everybody wants to go home while you're at home, right?
Well, we're home.
You're all at home.
You're doing really great. We're, we're under two hours into a pretty complicated hearing. It's, you're just fantastic. Thank you very much. Uh, let me just check my sheet here to make sure there wasn't anything else, um, that we needed. So, uh, we're going to include that technical memorandum from TO Engineering and the circulation plan as an appendix. Can I have a, a motion to, uh, make that recommendation as a change and move it forward to council?
Anybody want to? Mark?
Confused on what we're doing in this, this one?
Honestly, I'll do what you're saying there, Heather, so I didn't catch all of that.
Sorry, Heather.
Um, we're asking the Plan Commission to recommend changing the draft plan to include TO Engineering's technical memo and the circulation plan that it was based on as an appendices to the draft, the draft plan.
Man, you're putting me on the spot right now.
Just tell me you're so moved, just spoken.
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to add TO Engineering, correct?
Yes.
Okay, to the, the draft proposal.
Second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm good at this, Mark, I think so. Everybody else is dead right now.
You're, you're doing great. Uh, that was my total list. So congratulations, you got through it all with one final motion. And that is to move the plan with your previous actions forward to city council. And there's a resolution that Zach put together for you that, uh, we would have your chair sign if you were to vote to move the plan forward to send to city council for final final consideration.
Is this the, the full plan?
The plan with all of the, uh, motions that you need tonight. So those are considered.
You don't have to read the whole thing for record, right?
No.
No. I would move to, to pass that forward to city council. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
It was Mark, okay.
Can you tell us when that meeting would be held?
Uh, it's likely to be the first part of June. Our very next steps are going to be to schedule a joint workshop with the Plan Commission and the city council so that you have an opportunity to, uh, discuss your recommendations with them. And that will, let's see, this is I have to pull up a calendar, I apologize.
Well, that's all right. That would answer my question then. If it's, if it's going to be a joint meeting, then I'd be there, so.
Yep. Um, so their, their next study session of the, of the city council would be on May 25th.
That's Memorial Day, Heather.
That's Memorial Day. Are you guys working?
Dang it. Um, I can ver, I can verify with the, the, uh, clerk Ian Schuber if they're going to move their study session um, and get that out to the Plan Commission or um, if it moves to June. Um, then I'm thinking that it's going to be on, uh, it might be the alternate joint study session date.
I guess if you let us know by email, that would be great.
I will do that. And then, um, following that joint study session, we would schedule a city council hearing for deliberation. So all of your recommendations in the draft would move forward for them to review. And so that, um, potentially could be, uh, in June. So if they have, if we had a study session on the 26th, it could be as early as June 1st. Or if we have the study session on the 8th, it could be June 15th for our first hearing of the city council. And then, um, then there would be a following hearing two weeks after that. So we'll, uh, concrete up the schedule and send it out to everybody as soon as we're able to confirm dates.
Yeah, hurry because my calendar is filling up.
Yeah, um, with all those plans and things you're going to do after you're released from.
I'm doing them anyways.
Shame on you.
Uh, well, I just have to say, congratulations. You did a great job. It was wading through a lot of material. Uh, you've had something like 30 people, uh, come in and provide comment on the plan over the course of your meetings. You've been really able to facilitate a great conversation. Several of the Plan Commission members were mentioning how much they appreciated actually this Zoom platform that you've gotten great results. As well as you've had really good conversations with people who've attended the meeting about, uh, their thoughts and what they'd like to do uh, with any potential changes and had a really interactive experience. So that has to do with you all and your grace, uh, under pressure with, uh, this unprecedented times as well as being really open to talking with people. And I think everyone really appreciates it.
It's likewise, even the staff have done a good job. So I really appreciate that too. As you see, there's a lot of documents, a lot of legality. So you guys have done a great job too.
Yes.
Thank you. And I just want to give a shout out to Zach Becker, our new planning technician, um, who spent a lot of hours poring through maps and data. First, um, SCJ Alliance, which prepared the draft and did all of the workshops with the Plan Commission, the background engagement on this helped us to our great kickoff workshop before the draft came out with the public and got that all set up and, um, did a survey with the community about the plan and what they'd like to see. So that was hours and hours of time that both the Plan Commission and SCJ invested in this as we move forward. So thank you very much. And, uh, our next steps next month will include so much more interesting material. thank you very much. And uh, our next steps next month will uh, include so much more interesting material.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments before we adjourn? Anybody want to say anything?
No.
I think you all guys are tired. So the meeting will adjourn at uh, 7:59 PM. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for everybody else that attended.
Great.
Woo.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.